Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 25th, 2022 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. And this meeting is being conducted by remote participation only. And I'll be reading a few points about our remote participation procedures in just a few moments. Please also note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. I also need to ask if anyone is recording the meeting. It's all right to record the meeting, but you do need to notify us. I'll give you a few seconds in case you're muted. So a few points on our remote participation procedures. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation only in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams or by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. That's 1-508-945-4410. And the conference ID number is 434-423-7. That's 434-423-7. And as I mentioned, you can also join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams through the link that is in the agenda that's posted on the town website. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we'll post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the Chair. Few procedural steps in regard to remote participation. We'll start with a roll call of all the Planning Board members. Then, if you are a non-Board member and you've been recognized by the Chair to speak, please repeat your name before you begin speaking and also repeat the last four digits of your phone number if you're connected by phone. We need to clearly identify all speakers on the call. And again, as mentioned, after an agenda item has been discussed by the public body, which in this case is the Planning Board, I will request comments or questions from citizens or non-Board members. And you may make your comments or questions when recognized by the Chair. Also, all votes by the Planning Board that are taken tonight will be done by roll call vote. And at the end of the meeting, we'll close the meeting with a verbal confirmation of adjournment and will note the time of adjournment. So let's begin with our roll call of Board members. I will mention that Art Spru and Tom Gagin will not be present tonight. So Warren Chain, are you present?
Warren Chain, present.
And Bob Worchafter, are you present?
Bob Worchafter, present.
Bob Dupus, are you present?
Bob Dupus, present.
And Roger Griffin, are you present?
Roger Griffin, I'm present.
Great, thank you. And do any Planning Board members need to recuse themselves from any items on tonight's agenda?
No.
No recusals, all right.
Catherine, wait a minute, I got...
Yeah?
Yes, this is Warren. I was not present, so I cannot vote to approve the minutes of one of the meetings on the 14th.
All right.
279 Crow Road, I cannot participate in that.
All right, so Bob Dupus cannot participate in 279 Crow Road. And Warren, then when we do the minutes, just abstain if you were not present. So let's go ahead to the first agenda items, and those are the minutes for the February 14th and April 11th meeting. So let's look at February 14th first. And Warren Chain was absent from that meeting. Any amendments or additions to the February 14th minutes? So if there are none, could I have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
Bob Dupus will make the move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Roger Griffin, a second.
All right, let's do the roll call vote. Warren Chain, you were absent, so you may abstain. Bob Worchafter?
I accept.
Bob Dupus?
I approve the minutes.
Roger Griffin?
I approve the minutes.
And I also approve the minutes for February 14th. Let's look at April 11th. And Tom Gagin and Roger Griffin, you're listed as absent from April 11th, so you can abstain. Any amendments, additions to the April 11th minutes? So let's do a roll call vote. Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Wait a minute, we have to have a motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'll make that.
Okay.
I second that.
Thank you, my apologies. So let's do the roll call vote. Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Dupus?
Bob Dupus, approve.
Bob Worchafter?
Bob Worchafter, approve.
And Roger, it's fine for you abstain, and this is Catherine. I also approve the April 11th minutes. Next on our agenda is a public hearing. And this is regarding a citizen's petition to propose a zoning bylaw amendment. And hold one moment. I'm going to go through our public hearing procedures for you, and then we'll begin. So we do have procedures for the public hearing. We begin by asking our Planning Board clerk, who is Roger Griffin, to read the public notice. Then we have a presentation by the applicant. Then we will have questions and comments from the Planning Board. Then I will ask for public statements in favor of the application. Then if there's any correspondence regarding this matter, I will read that into the record. Then we'll ask for public statements opposing the application and then give the applicant a chance for rebuttal. Then we have time for further Planning Board comments or questions, after which the Planning Board would take a formal vote to close the public hearing and enter formal deliberations and formal vote on the matter. In this case, the Planning Board would be voting to either recommend or not recommend this citizen's petition for proposed zoning bylaw amendment to annual town meeting. And please note that once the public hearing is closed, there is no further audience participation allowed once the board enters formal deliberations. So with that being said, I will ask our clerk, Roger Griffin, to please read the public notice regarding this matter.
Citizen petition warrant article allow tent camping in municipal conservancy district to amend the Town of Chatham protective zoning bylaw to specifically allow tent camping within the municipal conservancy district. This requires adding the definition. Number 108, tent camping means camping with tents, tarps, and similar temporary structures. Tent camping can include campers or support vehicles when necessary for handicapped accessibility. Classification of Section 3 District Regulations, C, District Use Regulations, A, Master Conservancy, Municipal Conservancy District. The Municipal Conservancy District is comprised of municipal properties that are restricted for conservation purposes and are administered by the Conservation Department and Conservation Commission. The addition of tent camping to the standard permitted use in Section 3 District Regulation, C District Use Regulations, A Municipal Conservancy District, A Standard Permitted Uses. Number 3, low-intensity recreational use such as walking, biking, fishing, picnicking, and tent camping. Number 4, structures and improvements related to low-intensity regulation use, conservation agriculture in tent camping. Section 6, supplementary regulations. A Site Plan Review. Site Plan Approval shall be approved for uses except single-family dwellings and their accessory structures, approved home occupations, agriculture, and fishing uses, roadside stands, and those permitted in the MC District and those uses permitted in conservancy districts as set for in Section 4A of this bylaw. Section 7, Special Regulations B, Specific Standards. 17, tent, trailer camping vehicle, mobile home, tent camping. Temp D, tent camping shall be permitted in accordance with the Town of Chatham Rules and Governance Use under land under Conservation Commission Control or Applicable Rules and Regulations promulgated by the Conservation Commission. Temporary or permanent bathroom facility shall be approved by the Board of Health in Conservation Commission. Fire permit shall be obtained from the Fire Department. Appendix A, Use Table, modified to define the special condition use. Tent, trailer, camping vehicle, mobile home, tent camping. And at this point, I don't know what SC, SC, et cetera, et cetera.
Special conditions. Yeah, it means, I believe it means special conditions, or the X means not permitted.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you, Roger. So I think Thad Eldridge is with us. Did you want to present on this?
Good afternoon, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. For the record, Thad Eldridge, I've been involved in the Scouts in Chatham for most of my life. We've had some issues with membership over the years, and we've always camped over at Goose Pond. And now our campsite is abandoned at this point. And we find that the zoning bylaw doesn't specifically allow or not allow tent camping. And so we need to define it somehow in order to reopen this campsite. Rather than getting into spot zoning, we just looked at the Municipal Conservation Zoning District. The Conservation Commission already has control over this area. And they also have a rule, or a set of rules, that would be applicable. Overnight camping is not allowed in any area except as authorized in writing by the Commission. And two years ago, when we started this, pre-COVID, we did meet with the Conservation Commission to review this to make sure we would be able to get some written authorization, and they were supportive. Another rule they have is no open fires are permitted without the express written permission. And of course, I've written into the bylaw that we also want to get a fire permit for these for assurance. These regulations can be enforced by the authorized agents of the Board of Selectmen, the Chatham Police Department, and/or the Conservation Agent. So very simply, we're just looking to make this as easy as possible for us. So we've written this so that we're not going for site plan review with Planning Board or special permit or anything with the zoning Board of Appeals. Our Conservation Commission does a great job at enforcing their own regulation. And so we've written the bylaw that way. If there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great, thank you, Thad. So Warren Chain, do you have any questions about the proposed bylaw amendment? Any questions or comments for Thad?
I do, and I thank you, Thad, for going through a bit of the history, because that was going to be my first question, if you could do that. When was it that camping stopped? And was there a bylaw at that time?
Bylaw interpretations were a lot more lenient when the camping started. So I'm not even sure if there was a bylaw that enabled tent camping when we started camping there decades ago. When it stopped was probably 10 years ago, give or take. And there's interest in reopening it. When I got re-involved in Scouts, when my son came of age to be a Cub Scout, there were a number of leaders who had tried to start the campground again, and they were unsuccessful. So, hey, I got to come in and help out.
That whole history of the unsuccessful part, I mean, part of me, I mean, I'm very supportive of the idea of reopening the campground, absolutely. I guess my, I'm unclear as to why any action is really necessary if it had been permitted in the past, under perhaps a loose interpretation of bylaws. I'm not sure what abandoning means, a campsite that isn't used, it's just a campsite that's not used. But, so I guess my real issue here is, do we really even need a bylaw change merely to have the Conservation Commission allow the Scouts to camp at the campground that they had camped on for generations? I don't have a real problem with it, except to get some comfort that it's not a greater solution than the problem. I don't know how many people are going to be looking to camp on other public lands in Chatham, or whether they ever had in the past. Do you know, I mean, do we have people camping in various places, or have we? Or are we likely to expect that to happen? And if we don't, then do we need a bylaw that permits it?
You know, other than the occasional camper who's doing that illicitly, I don't believe that many people do camp. The Conservation Commission would be overseeing all of the municipal conservation land.
But the Commission in the past has not been able to authorize camping at the campground, you're saying, though?
It was never a concern. And with abandonment, if you abandon a use for two years, it's technically gone.
Correct, unless it was technically or included within the scope of whatever bylaw was there, in which case it would technically be included there now. And you're saying it's well-controlled by the Conservation Commission rules. So if the rules are there, if you've gotten something that isn't permitted, that seems odd as well. If they have a way to control it, but it's not permitted, that doesn't seem to square to me.
If you would like me to provide you with a list of all the contradictory rules and bylaws in this town, I'd be very happy to.
Well, I'm very supportive of the program. They said the history of the town better than I would perhaps have more pointed questions. But again, if the only way to proceed here is to amend a bylaw which would affect the entire municipal properties of the town with respect to camping, well, then so be it. But if we already have a Conservation Commission that manages how this could be done, it would seem to me we would just give them a proclamation of support. But if a bylaw is, has that been determined by town council? Or does that need to be determined by town council? I mean, has it...
A couple of years ago, I had reviewed this with the zoning enforcement officer. Because there's nothing saying yes or no, then it's an automatic no.
Okay. Well, I don't have any other question, just that general concern, is it really necessary? And I don't know how, you know, this meeting is going to be prepared to really direct that head-on. But I certainly support the idea of opening the campground as soon as possible, so.
That's appreciated.
Okay, thank you, Warren. How about Bob Worchafter? Do you have questions or comments for Thad?
Yeah, I do. As an Eagle Scout from 60 years, 50 years ago, 55 years ago, or something like that, I have undergone an evolution in camping and what's required to camp since I was a Boy Scout. And I'm concerned that this area, because it was historically done, is going to be... The idea that we could just camp there because we've always done it, I think, is a concern to me. When I go backpacking now, I have to take out everything, including waste. So I'm most concerned about the toilet facility and how the toilet is good. You know, it's going to be inappropriate to me to have any kind of outhouse or even, you know, worse, people digging cat holes and burying their waste. So everything should be removed. And I don't want to improve any kind of camping on our conservancy area where we have serious affluent concerns already and one so close to Goose Pond where I swim almost every day is really a concern. So if we can work out a camping solution that is modern sustainability and not digging trenches and all the other things I did to get, you know, my camping merit badge, I'm all for it, but it's not in here. There's no restrictions as to what camping is, and the toilets are sort of mentioned that they will be, but it's not explicit enough for me to be approving this. And also, I think Warren has raised a concern. I think your camping in this location is great. I don't want to have it be a loophole for other people to camp anywhere else on our conservancy district. So I'm not really happy about a sort of a generalized bylaw that allows camping in the conservancy district. Those are my concerns. I want to support it. I'm sure if we can work with the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts to talk about what is now a sustainable camping experience that was not what they did 10 years ago. But that's not anything, none of that is written into this. That's my concern.
What is written into that is visiting the Board of Health for these questions. And that's the more appropriate board to review how are we going to accommodate the waste. We'd be using porta-potties to begin with. Basically, bucket with seat, bagging it and taking it out. If, I've been written in there something about structures, much like the White Pond Landing, there's a composting toilet there that does very well, and that keeps the waste from going into the environment. So that was the intention to move forward.
Okay.
Right now, I can't... Nobody's been knocking on anybody's door. Conservation, I don't believe, has ever been requested permission to camp on property that they control.
Worchafter, do you have any more questions?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Those are my concerns.
All right. How about Bob Dupus? Do you have questions or comments with that?
Bob Dupus has plenty of stuff to say, considering I'm 70. When I was 12, we used to go camping there. It was a wonderful thing. My father went camping there. My uncles have gone camping there. There used to be a building up there, but I think Doc Keen put it up there originally. And unfortunately, that's gone by the wayside. But there was a nice little open area that everybody, that was a Boy Scout in this town, would go camping there. From, I would say, from the early 50s, I was in the mid 60s entitled to go there. As you know, camping is not allowed in this town. But the town would always allow any organized group, explorers, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, Wee-Below's, order the light to go there and camp. They brought in their water. I think at one time, there was a well there, but they bring in their water, they carry out their trash. They are far enough away from Goose Pond to not infiltrate any waste at all into the groundwater or anything. Matter of fact, it was a nice hike to go to the power lines and hike down to the pond, go fishing, go swimming. Uh, matter of fact, it was a nice hike to go to the power lines and hike down to the pond, go fishing, go swimming. In the summer, we used to go, uh, there in the middle of the winter for winter camping. I'm all in favor for this, and I know a lot of you guys don't, haven't lived here that long, so you don't know anything about this. But this is kind of an icon of, of scouting to be able to go to this particular piece of land. We, do we used to drive up into it, there's a road that goes up there, stay on the road, and then hike our gear in. Yeah, I don't know, it must have been about two or three hundred feet, I believe, Thad, to go in there, set up our camps, do our thing, clean up everything and, and, and get out, and it was a very enjoyable experience. Uh, my biggest thing is that if you, the way it's worded in here, it, to me, it seems like it's opening up camping to anybody. And, and my thing is to restrict it to an organization, a scouting organization, or that type, uh, uh, with, with the proper utensils, with the proper scope of, of being there, with the leaders, uh, whether it be boys, girls, um, you know, explorers or, um, that type of nature. I don't want to see RVs in there. I don't want to see camping on, on the other parts of this town where people always walk and stuff. This is a little bit of a secluded area. It's a nice area for it. It's, like I said, uh, scouting, as we all know, has depreciated over the years as the Masonic, uh, things have slowed down because, because of the electronics. And I'm glad, glad to see that scouting is picking up, and I'm all in favor of this. But like I said, I'm not in favor of doing it on just any land. This is one particular spot that, that is, uh, was put together by Doc Keen years and years ago. He was an avid scouter. Um, so, uh, I believe it's a good spot for it. Uh, but like I said, I'm, I'm not in favor of having this opened up to camping for the whole. That's pretty much what I got to say.
Okay.
We do, we do have a, a set of revisions that we've drafted for the Conservation Commission, and we can certainly add to that to make sure that those regulations don't enable camping just anywhere.
Uh, Thad, this is Catherine. When you say you have a set of revisions, do you mean revisions to your draft by law?
This would be the Conservation Rules and Regulations, because they really
Oh, I see.
One line, override camping is not allowed in any area except as authorized and writing by the commission.
Okay.
But we do have a set of, of draft conditions in there to be able to say, you know, what is appropriate? And what happens if somebody wanted to open up a, try camping over near Nickerson's Pit?
Right.
Not appropriate or not, this would allow them to review it, certainly going to a quarter acre lot, the one that's over on, I don't even know which one I can think of off the top of my head, but if there's a little lot of municipal conservation land, it certainly shouldn't be camped on.
Okay.
Excuse me, Thad, I'm not, I'm not trying to put the kibosh on camping in larger areas like you're saying. Okay, I just, uh, uh, but, but I don't want to, I don't want to see the, the entire place opened up to just anybody camping. You know, uh, that, that's my main goal, but I, I think Nickerson's, once it shuts down, would make an avid place, and I'm sure there's a few more qualified places.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Uh, any more Bob Dubus?
No, I'm done, I'm sorry.
Okay, great, thank you.
If I may.
Yes, go ahead, Thad.
Say one of the operative words there. He said, this is a good spot. We were also trying to avoid the spot zoning question.
Right.
I also didn't want to write a bylaw to create a district here specifically for camping. Uh, I was just trying to work within the framework that we have to make it as simple as possible.
All right. Um, Roger Griffin, do you have questions or comments for that?
Well, my comment is I think it's great. I think it's, it's, it's something we probably should be doing. I was kind of curious. Now, we say, how, how often, how many, how many people, how often, how many people do people have camping here? On any basis?
When I was growing up, it must have been three or four times a year that we camp here at most. So, right now, we're in a time of rebuilding. COVID really knocked out our numbers.
Right.
So it's, hopefully this will attract more.
But this could also be year-rounds. I know even with, with, uh, being a leader, we used to, uh, do, I used to, I used to be looking for business trips. I wouldn't have to do those winter trips, but anyway, I used to survive those nights out there, but it was fun. It was fun. It'd be great to see it come back. So how, how many kids, how many kids in, in, in Chatham are involved with Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts at this point?
Oh, we're under two dozen at this point, so.
Pardon me?
Under two dozen.
Oh, okay, but still, that's more, that's, that's, that's great. That's more than I thought. So, but this, so this is who, this is really the group that's going to, we're targeting. These are the kids that are going to be using.
That's the plan. Um, but then if there are other groups out there that are interested in it, I certainly wouldn't want to preclude them.
Right.
I believe we have an explorer troop anymore.
Who, so would, would, would you be, who'll be actually, let's say, monitor, who'll be overseeing who uses it and?
Everything has to go through the Conservation Commission, just like if you wanted to do any other project on a municipal conservation piece of property, it goes through the commission.
Okay, so it, it sounds like we're pretty much all on the same page. It's just that each of us have maybe want some clarifications or just really want to get some. That's good. No, the, the most important thing is who's presenting this at town meeting?
I will be.
That's good. Well, you know, there is this, no, there isn't a say there. It's good because you have all, you know, we have, we have some of the foolish questions or maybe the naive questions, but you have all the answers, and I think that's great that you are doing it because I really would find it hard to believe there'd be anybody who was in support of doing this. I think, I think it's, I think it's a great, it's a great idea. And, uh, I think if you're making the presentation, obviously you'll be able to, you know, fill in some of it. And I think as always, I think we've got to fill in some holes, and that's about it. I don't know, I don't know how we do it, but I think it's, I think it's, I think it's great.
I think we'll publish out the draft rules that we have. We'll get those to the commission so that they can review it. And, I mean, they're not lengthy by any means. It's just, and then they do echo everything that's been stated tonight.
Here, Roger, if that's it, this is Catherine.
That's it, me, I'm good.
Okay, I do have a few comments, um, and questions. Uh, first of all, I just want to say that I'm in agreement with some of the other board members who have voiced some questions. I think, Thad, first, I want to say, and I think everyone, I think on the board, is certainly in favor of the intention and purpose of this citizens petition proposed bylaw amendment. I think everyone is in favor of creating a situation where the camping for the scouts can be resumed uh, on the particular area of land where it was once done in the past. However, uh, and I need to remind the board, I think most of you are aware, there's that purpose, but then there's also the actual draft and wording of the bylaw as we have it. And I think a couple of people have brought up some questions, and I just want to, um, I actually agree with those questions because the reality is, as all of you know, uh, there's an intention and purpose to putting forth a, a bylaw amendment. But then, once it's in place, uh, it is interpreted according to what is there in the wording. And sometimes there can be a range of interpretation of any particular zoning bylaw. I think all of you have seen this occur, and I agree with the concerns that I'm concerned about opening up camping in general to everyone across all of municipal conservancy land. I'm concerned about that, and whereas in the bylaws in the past, we have, it hasn't been, uh, as you mentioned, Thad, it hasn't been specifically prohibited or specifically allowed. Um, but for many years, the scouts were able to camp there, but then at one point you said, uh, it was no longer allowed because the use was abandoned. I feel this bylaw just generally allows camping on any municipal conservancy land without much restriction or definition, and to be honest with you, I'm a thousand percent in support of your intention, but I think this draft does something else. Um, it may allow something else that we don't really want to happen. So I'm just concerned that maybe can we tighten up the draft a bit? Um, so that there are some restrictions, very explicit and very clearly stated in the proposed bylaw amendment, that would not open it up to general camping for the general public anywhere on any municipal conservancy land in the town of Chatham. Um, I'm also going to bring, and also maybe tighten it up to address some of the concerns that Bob Wurz, Wurzhafter brought up. It is the truth that today we have greater concerns about the impact of camping than we might have had ten years ago, or twenty years ago, or thirty years ago. So there may be, um, we need to have some greater restrictions or greater specifics about what can be done and what can't be done. And also, I would suggest that to consider, uh, you know, I'm just bringing up these points to consider, that there might be some restrictions or definitions of time and space that, um, that it's very clear that it's temporary camping, that it's limited to a certain number of people. Um, again, I just think, uh, again, I just want to reiterate, I support your purpose, but knowing how bylaws are sometimes, uh, if we put in a bylaw that simply allows camping, that could be interpreted very broadly. I do understand everything will have to get approved by the Conservation Commission and goes through them. My concern would be, could somebody challenge that and say, I get to camp here, you know, and live here all the time? You know, um, because the bylaw allows it, so I'm, I'm just asking those questions. Um, and please, I'm interested in hearing your response.
There are a few known areas where people have camped illegally. And that is unfortunate. You can't expect somebody who's going to break the rules to read or follow the rules.
Right.
And we're trying to do this the right way. But I can certainly, um, amend at town meeting, um, probably a minimum lot size.
Something like that would make sense.
So that a municipal conservation that has a certain area, ten, twenty, thirty acres, some number. Um, restriction on time is certainly appropriate. We'd be looking for a weekend camping. I, I was a, I am a Cub Scout leader, and I don't really want to take little kids over to Nickerson or to, too far away just in case in the middle of the night they want to go home. Limiting the number, we're already pretty limited. I can't expect a, uh, a great mob to, to show up, and I don't know if I'd want to limit the number because if we limit it to thirty and we get thirty-one kids, I wouldn't want to turn that one way. And having this for, going through an organization would certainly be inappropriate means, and we can state, you know, no septic. And it's really more for the Board of Health to say, there should be no septic system associated with this, or no trenching, or no, you know, taking out all of your refuse, including all of your waste.
Excuse me, could I interrupt, please, for a minute?
Yes, Mr. Dubus, actually, I just want to make a, one more comment, and then, then you can speak. Um, this is Catherine again. The point I'm just making is you have an intention, an intentional use for this particular bylaw amendment, but we just need to be aware of how things actually work, that once something is legally allowed, there may be a lot of uses applied that are unintentional, not what you intend. And I'm just want to make sure from the legal perspective that we're not allowing uses and volume of use that we don't really want. But that's off, so we have to look at the, very specifically, what it actually says in the draft, and if we need some restrictions, we need to add those. So now, Mr. Dubus, please go ahead.
I was just wondering that, instead of limiting the number of people, but like Thad said, it could be one person, more. The, the idea maybe is to limit the time, and I don't think that a three-day weekend is quite long enough. I would go with five days, uh, you know, say, look, we're going to go camping, it's going to be a five-day camp trip, limited to that at the most. That way there, it covers all the weekends, and it usually covers enough time for the kids to have a, a full enjoyment of camping and hustling and foraging and, and stuff like that. And that, that way there would be a time limit on, on that rather than a kid limit.
Okay. This is Catherine again, and again, the, I, I want to say, please, uh, please understand this. We're saying kids in nowhere, I don't read anywhere that this says that it's restricted to kids and to scouts. So you need to understand that if you put this in place, someone else, you know, can just, can use it as, as long as the legalities allow it. So, you know, your intention is for kids, but.
I don't think we can restrict it to just scouts.
Okay, so then we need to consider whether we want to open up camping to everyone. Um, and maybe, you know, on, on Chatham Municipal Conservancy Land, anywhere. And right now, it doesn't even have a five-day time restriction, so potentially, and I'm sorry to be, how to put this, in a sense, the devil's advocate here, but legally, we would be allowing anyone to come and camp for all summer or something like that. So I just, we just need to understand the legal effects of what's actually in the draft. And so Bob Wurzhafter, could you?
No, I think Roger had his hand up, at least two people had their hands up before me.
Before you. All right. So Roger, please go ahead.
No, that, just, just, just simply put, I guess, to the point, I, I was assuming that, uh, for example, we talked about, uh, the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts, and we were talking exclusively, probably even, probably exclusively to the Chatham. Now, I know with Boy Scouts, aren't they, who, who, doesn't someone have to charter the group?
Yeah.
And that would be charter, what, so would we, we, I guess we want to assume that these, so the group is chartered out of Town of Chatham?
Methodist church.
Pardon me?
The Methodist church.
Okay, good. All right. Again, again, I guess I have to say, maybe, maybe we're all coming back to the same circle. I guess I thought maybe the, who'd be using, it would be a smaller group, I guess would be, so would be, I was, I was assuming would specifically be Boy Scouts slash Cub Scouts slash Girl Scouts that were chartered in the Town of Chatham. So would we have to open this up to Boy Scouts in other parts of the Cape? Would be just Chatham?
May, may I interject? This is Catherine, and, um, I'll also ask for Ally's comments. Um, the way the bylaw is drafted, the intention is to open it up for the scouts, but the way the bylaw is drafted, there is no restriction, that it's confined to scout groups either from Chatham or outside of Chatham. And we're also saying that we're not sure if we can restrict it in that way. So therefore, I'm just pointing out to people that if we, um, put this bylaw into place, it would allow camping by anyone on any municipal land in Ch, conservancy land in Chatham, by anyone. So we, you know.
With the express written permission from the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, and the Fire Department.
Yes.
It's not like we're opening this up for a free-for-all for everybody to go camping.
Yes, but it could be, um, if, for example, another group applied, or not a group, just various individuals, and the Commission, Conservation Commission turned them down, my question is, could that be legally challenged because the bylaw allows it? So that's the question I'm bringing up, and I ju, I don't have an answer. Uh, Bob Wurzhafter, did you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I, this is my concern, because, uh, you can't, i- unless it's owned or, or restricted to the scouts as a, as a, uh, use, uh, I, I don't think you could keep me and my friends from, from going there and camping uh, for a couple nights, uh, if we got permission and from the Conservation Commission, and I, and I agree, it'd be hard for them to say, no, you can't. If we got permission and from the Conservation Commission and I, and I agree, it'd be hard for them to say, no, you can't if I follow all of the same rules that the, the scouts are required to do. So my question really is, and, and, and also on this is, I know we don't do spot zoning most of the time, but, but if there ever was one application here that made sense for z- spot zoning, it's not like we're trying to allow somebody to build a house that, that wouldn't otherwise be allowed. We're taking a piece of conservation property that was previously used for camping by the Boy Scouts and designating that they can camp there, uh, with permission from the Conservation Commission and everyone else. That, to me, it, it is a simpler to do it as a spot zone and create a new zone or whatever it takes to make that work, uh, seems simpler to me.
Thank you, Bob. This is Catherine. I think also just want to say the other question that we sometimes ask when we're faced with a situation like this that might require spot zoning is we have to ask the question, is there another way that's legally proper that the purpose that you have in mind, which is to allow the scouts to camp in that one particular area where they have in the past? Is there another proper legal way that that can be accomplished rather than a zoning bylaw amendment which opens up camping to, to everyone on all town municipal conservancy land? So that's the question, is there another way to solve this problem?
Do we have a camping overlay district? I mean, we've.
Would you like to write it? Would you like to write it?
Well, I don't think of any harder than this. It's a, I mean, it, it would specify the exact area, it would specify, uh, how it's can be, you know, legally be used. And, and it would outline the actual, uh, camping spot in its area. And, and how hard, I mean, to me, that, that's just safer.
As long as we're not violating state law by spot zoning, right?
That's not spot zoning, it's an overlay district.
So again, this is Catherine, I'm gonna interject. I think these are technical questions, um, that we may need to get the advice of Town Council on before going ahead. So, and Ally, I don't know if you had your hand up or if you wanted to make a comment. And if not, that's fine. I just can't see all the hands.
I did not have my hand up. You had called my name, so I just had my camera on in case you needed me.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, again, this is Catherine. So I'm just suggesting that it's possible that a zoning bylaw amendment, because it does open up to other uses, uh, uses by anyone uh, on any municipal conservancy land, that we need to be careful about that. And unless the draft can be amended to include properly, legally include restrictions that restrict it to the intended use, I think we need to be careful about opening it up to uses by many people in many ways that may not be intended and may not be desired. So that's my comment. I do see a member of the public have your hand raised. We are in a public, uh, hearing. And at this point, we are not yet taking public comments. We are still in board questions and comments. We will be able to have public comments in favor of the application in a few moments. I will just ask the board members if you have any other comments or questions for Thad before we move to the next section of the public hearing. All right. So if there's no further comments from the board, we'll go to public statements. First, we need to ask for public statements in favor of the application. So anyone connected to the call who'd like to make a comment in favor of this proposed zoning bylaw amendment. I do see Philip Bush has, uh, his hand raised.
Hi Catherine, this is Philip. I, I'm, I'm not in favor, so I'll, I'll, I'll wait.
So you'll wait, all right, great. So I'll ask again, any members of the public who wanted to comment in favor of this application? Uh, then the next step would be that I would read correspondence. I do not believe that we have any correspondence on this particular matter. So then we'll move to public statements in opposition of this application. Mr. Bush, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, good afternoon, everybody, thank you. This is Philip Bush, 1551 Old Queen Anne Road in Chatham. Thad, I, I applaud your efforts here and I fully support, wholeheartedly, something like this for the scouts. I think it's an integral part of, of their learning and it is definitely, uh, something that, that we should approach, but we should approach it differently. I think the way this is written, it's a recipe for absolute disaster. And I can speak to it firsthand because I have bought conservation land. And several times a year, I have to either pick up someone's trash or ask someone to leave the properties because they aren't authorized to camp there. We've had tarps and tents, uh, human feces and the high risk of fire, um, at, at our location. And I'm only speaking of, to, to, to one, um, property. And these are fragile environments. If, if, if people are allowed to take advantage of them in whole, the way this is written, I, I think we could see these lands go to ruin within two to three years. So I asked the board to consider not supporting this amendment the way it's written and give it pause for some other alternative that focuses on the camping site itself. And it's been stated, so that's for brighter minds in mind to work out. But the way it's written now, um, it, it, it truly, truly will be devastating to these lands. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bush. All right, uh, one moment, please. Uh, any other members of the public who have statements in opposition to the application? Sometimes I have trouble seeing all the hands. I don't see any other hands raised. So then we'll go to the next step. The applicant has the opportunity for rebuttal. So Thad, if you'd like to go ahead.
Well, we'd certainly be happy putting a minimum acreage. Mr. Bush lives adjacent to an 11 acre conservation land. And if we were to put a 20, 30 or 40 acre minimum for that land to be applicable, that would continue to prohibit the camping that is going on next door to him.
Okay. Can I get that?
Can I, can I speak to that? This is Philip.
Yes, go ahead.
Thad, perhaps you're right. But unfortunately, we live in a world today where rules and regulations are often put by the wayside for an individual's self gratification or they just don't really give a damn about the rules and they do what they want anyway. And I think the way this is written, once again, it opens these lands up to these individuals who don't take the responsibility of following the rules and they'll just do what they want. And that's, that's where the greatest risk comes with the way this is written. The, the people who don't follow the rules and who really don't have much regard for the environment or nature itself, um, they just, they just want to, you know, enjoy themselves. And, and in oft cases, those individuals are the ones who, who, who do the most damage and greatly abuse these lands because they really, at the bottom line, they don't care.
Okay.
And I would counter with, we can write all the rules in the world, which we have more rules in this town than we can enforce. And we could write more and they're still not going to pay attention and they're going to do what they do.
I agree. So what I'm saying is, I think it's up to you, the scouts, to write something that allows camping at the goose pond area where you have a contained environment where it can be monitored and you can put the proper, um, facilities in place and, you know, restricted just to that area. And I think that's been said and I think that's a great idea. But again, to make it this broad is, is, uh, is negligence.
Okay, uh, this is Catherine, thank you, Mr. Bush. Thank you, Thad. Let's move on to the next step of the public hearing procedure, which is any additional comments from the planning board? If any members of the planning board would like to make additional comments, please go ahead, raise your hand or.
Catherine, I, I, I know that unless we specify who can use this, it can't just be the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts.
Correct, correct.
And, um, it, it just seems to me that, uh, that's, that also is a broad, too broad of, of use for this area. I, I just, I, I wish we, I, I wish we could think and I think we can, it's probably more work. But we figure out a way to designate this as a, as a scout area and, and that, and make it that for what it is. Cause that's what, that, when I used to go camping, we used to go to scouting reservations. And, uh, and that's probably what we need to do here.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Any other comments from the planning board? Warren?
Yes, Madam Chairman. My, my impression is, having heard Bob speak, that there have been camping on that site prior to the time that we had the zoning. That, is that correct?
I don't know if we ever had a zoning bylaw.
Yes.
Allowed for camping.
Madam Chair, this is Bob.
Bob Dubus, but before we had any zoning.
The, the scouts have been camping there for, since the early 60s.
Correct. Well, if that.
Doc Keen used to take them out there. My father used to, he was 92, used to tell me when he was a kid, they used to go camping up there and he told me about the shed and, you know, all of that stuff out there. And it's off Broken Back Road, which is, you know. So, I mean, it was there and being used with permission from the town from, from years and years and years of, of, uh, doing it. Gibby Bothwick, a highway surveyor, took me when I was a kid out there camping, uh, in the 70s, early 70s. It just, you know, and it progressed, the Sea Scouts would, would go there. So that's what I mean. And if we looked on, on what, what I have on my agenda here, it does mention, uh, the Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts decide to reopen the camping area. So it is, you know, it is, he didn't present it to us as for the scouts or scouting type, uh, functions. So, but I, I, I know what you're saying and that's one of my concerns is not to open it up to just every Tom, Dick and Harry, plus trailers and plus campers and all that. So yeah, I believe it does need to be tightened up. I'm in favor of this, but I believe it needs to be tightened up.
Thank you, thank you, Bob Dubus. Go ahead, Warren.
Well, my point of, um, ensuring that the camping has been going on there prior to there being bylaws and has also been allowed to continue with the current bylaw, would seem to me that a case could be made, subject to Town Council agreeing, that in fact, the camping by the groups that have been using it is somehow grandfathered under the bylaw. And the fact that two years have passed and no one has camped there, I'm not sure, um, means that the campsite has been abandoned by those groups. It does mean that for reasons, um, that have, are probably nobody's business, there's been no camping, either lack of campers or other activities. But it's, it's certainly not abandoned, I think, in the eyes of the scouts as a place to camp. And it would seem to me that it has been authorized de facto under the zoning laws and it would be grandfathered because it was taking place before there were any bylaws. And therefore, a case could be made for saying that it has perhaps a variance to the current bylaw if needed. Maybe that's the way to go and the variance would be granted to the scouting organizations. It, and, and if that were the case, it would be very specifically related to the organizations that have used it to camp there and to no one else because they were grandfathered.
This is Catherine. Thank you, thank you, Warren. I just want to respond, I think these are good points, but I just wanted to respond. Again, I think this is a tech, a technical legal issue that might, that we might really need to refer to Town Council. My understanding of grandfathered uses, and again, this is just my understanding, I think it's something we need to check, is that Mass General Law allows, uh, uses that were prior to a zoning change that were legal uses prior to the change. So in some sense, how something was used prior to any zoning law, I'm not sure that that is grandfathered. I'm just saying I'm not sure. So it's a good point, but I think again, we're getting into some technical questions. Ally, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I just wanted to click, quickly clarify the grandfathering discussion. So it is correct that if a use is, is not used within two years, it's technically abandoned, as Thad was saying. And so you could think of it like if you had a residential home and no, or a business. If you had a business, that was a retail business and no one used a retail business for two years. The building is still there, but no one's technically physically selling out of there. So the use is technically abandoned. And so that's kind of the, um, status that we would consider if the use was abandoned or not. So whether the campsite is still there is null and void. It's, it's, has the campsite been used within two years? That would see, that would make the use grandfathered. And so I'm not sure, I wasn't part of the conversations that Thad had, I guess, with the Building Commissioner. And if it was determined at that point that the use had been abandoned, um, to actually camp in Goose Pond, that area, I'm not a hundred percent sure there, maybe Thad can clarify more. But that's how we consider grandfathering and when something is abandoned or not.
Good, thank you, Ally.
That helps, yep.
Yeah, no, that was very helpful, thank you. Warren, you still had your hand raised? Do you have any further comments or?
No, I just forgot to take it down, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any further comments from members of the planning board before we take a vote to close the public hearing and enter formal deliberations? This is Catherine, I just want to comment. Again, I think, I think I echo the board when I'm saying that everyone is in favor of the intention and purpose of this proposed bylaw amendment, which is to allow the scouts to camp again at the site that they have historically enjoyed for so many years. My personal viewpoint is that the draft needs to be redrafted, needs to, if, so that there's more restrictions, so that we don't open this up to unintended uses that could be, you know, larger numbers of people, longer durations of stay. The way I read this draft, basically, anyone could come and camp on any municipal conservancy land in the Town of land in the town of Chatham year-round. There's no restriction in time, no restriction in space, no restriction in number. So if the law allows it, we would have difficulty in enforcing, creating enforcements that would disallow those unintended permissions that we're giving. So that's my main concern. And also, you're, it's completely correct, we cannot do spot zoning, but there might be other legally proper solutions, um, to, to this situation that would allow the scouts to resume camping where they always have. But I just think there's some unanswered, actually some unanswered legal questions for me. So, that being said, um, if there's no other comments from the board, we would move to close the public hearing, uh, and we need a formal vote to do that. Once we close the public hearing, the board will enter deliberations and formal vote. What the board would vote on would be to either recommend or not recommend this citizen's petition for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment, uh, to annual town meeting. So if there's no further comments from the board, uh, may I have a vote to close the public hea, may I have a motion, I'm sorry, to close the public hearing?
I so moved to close the public hearing.
Thank you. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So let's do a roll call vote, and we're just voting to close the public hearing now. Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, vote to close.
Bob Wurchafter?
Uh, Bob Wurchafter, uh, vote to close.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, vote to close.
Roger Griffin? Um, Roger, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Roger Griffin, vote to close.
And this is Catherine Hopper, and I also vote to close the public hearing. So now the public hearing is closed, there'll be no further participation by the public. Um, so formal discussion by the board? Any deliberations, discussion?
Madam Chairman, this is Warren.
Yes.
You have correctly, I think, echoed the sentiments of many of the board members that this is something we'd like to see happen, in other words, camping, uh, and raise the, all the issues, uh, that have been collectively raised. Um, and nobody wants to open up, uh, Pandora's Box here with, um, and creating, uh, something that would be difficult to undo. Um, but the technical questions are still there that may require input from town council. Certainly, I can't ask town council how we ought to do this. Perhaps the planning board can. I don't think Tad, uh, has the ability to go ask town council, what's the best way to allow the scouts to go back to their campsite? But, um, we, it would seem to me that we ought to, um, have enough expertise here to know how to get an answer to those technical questions. What's, where do we go to find out how we accomplish what we all want to accomplish? But no more than that. Um, and so I would hope we have some input here, so we could take the weight off of Tad's shoulders to try and draft in the dark about not knowing, you know, what anybody might think, and when it gets to town councils for review. Um, so anyway, that's just my comment. We need to figure out how to, how to accomplish what we all think is perhaps not accomplished by Tad's draft.
Thank you, Warren. Uh, this is Catherine. I will suggest to the board that, because the way I'm reading everyone is that we do support the purpose and the intention of this proposed bylaw amendment, but there are some issues that have come up, that it would be proper, um, for us to request the community development department to confer, uh, with town council about, uh, some of the issues that we've brought up, and, and to answer your question, Warren, how best to accomplish the intended purpose without allowing unintended consequences. So that would, I would, I would certainly support that. Any other, uh, discussion from the board before we go to formal vote? And again, if I could remind the board what our vote is, is to recommend or not recommend this draft, uh, zoning bylaw amendment. And again, we're not talking about the purpose of it, we're talking about the draft itself, uh, to annual town meeting, and it's more proper if the motion is made in the positive, in other words, the motion is made to recommend, and then each board member votes yes or no. Does that, does that make sense to everyone? You can also abstain if you choose to abstain. Yes, Mr. Dubus?
Say that again, because I like what you were talking about the first time with, we support the theory of camping for the scouts.
We do.
We just don't support the way it's presented to us.
Yes, because we have concerns about unintended consequences.
So
Yes.
If, if that's not going to be our motion, then we should vote yes.
Uh, I don't think we can do it that way, Mr. Dubus. We have to vote on the draft that is before us.
Then, then we should vote the draft down with the idea that we, we support, with a letter stating we support, we support the idea, we, we just cannot figure out how to, how to, uh, make it fit in
Yes.
To our bylaws.
Okay. Um, we can add a comment, you know, that we support the purpose, uh, and that will be supportive, you know, to find a solution to accomplish the purpose. We could maybe add a note to that, but I think in the vote, we have to vote on the draft, uh, of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment that is before us.
So in other words, what we're saying is we're going to turn this down.
Well, no, you, you're going to vote on it, and then we're all going to decide as a board. I'm not going to tell you what we're going to do.
Um, I, I didn't say that. I just asked a question.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. It's a, it's a tech, technical difference, but that is the procedure we have to follow, I believe.
Are, are you ready for a motion?
Yes, but, and remember, the motion we make in the positive, and then we all vote yes or no. So I'm ready for a motion.
I, I cannot make it into positive. I'm going to vote the mo, I'm going to vote, vote it down with the, with, with what we said as a reason to vote it down.
Yes. Yes, but can you understand that you would vote, the motion, or Ally, maybe, I'll let Ally explain?
So technically, Bob, it's like, it's proper to have, present the motion in the affirmative, and then you vote however you want, but if you do, you know, vote it down after you make the motion, um, in the positive, then we could include some wording, um, that the chair would read at town meeting floor that says that, you know, we, the planning board does support this, um, in theory, and is supportive of, you know, the proposal to allow the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts to camp in this area. However, um, you know, it needs a little technical work, something like that.
Yeah.
We could, of course, include a comment like that.
All right, that, that clarifies it more for me. Thank you.
We can include in a comment like that, that the planning board supports the idea of engaging town council to determine how best to accomplish this desired objective.
We, yes, the planning board has the ability to make any comment that they so, uh, choose and see fit for, to town meeting floor. You're making a, basically a recommendation to town meeting.
Yeah. Good. Okay, so the motion would be, the motion would be made to send a positive recommendation to recommend this draft zoning bylaw, and then each board member would either vote yes to recommend it, or no, which would be not to recommend. That's just the formal way of making the motion, is you make it in the affirmative, and then each board member votes aye or nay. Does that make sense? So I'm going to ask for a motion now.
I move that we vote to, uh, accept this, uh, and recommend this, uh, what is it? Citizen's petition, uh, that we vote to recommend this citizen's petition to the, uh, town meeting.
Okay, thank you. For the proposed zoning bylaw amendment.
Yes.
Can I have a second to that motion?
This is Warren Chain. I second it.
All right, so now we'll do a roll call vote. Bob Wurchafter, do you vote aye or nay?
Nay.
And Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, nay.
And Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, nay.
And Bob Dubus?
I'll make it a home run, nay.
Okay. And this is Catherine. Uh, I also vote nay. So...
Madam Chairman, I move that we include a statement to the town meeting that the board of, uh, that the planning board is positive, favored, positively favors camping by the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts in that specific area, and, and wishes the town council and, and others to find a suitable way to make that, uh, legally, uh, possible.
Right. Good. That's a good draft of the statement.
I second it.
Good. So let's vote on this, adding this statement. We might refine it a bit, but it's really a good draft of the statement. Thank you, Bob. So let's do our roll call vote to include this statement to be read, uh, at annual town meeting, uh, when this citizen petition is presented. Uh, Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, I vote to include it.
Uh, Bob Wurchafter?
I vote to include it.
Bob Dubus?
I vote to include it.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, vote to include it.
And this is Catherine Hopper, and I also invoke, vote to include, uh, a statement, uh, indicating our support and our desire to work with town council to find a solution that will allow the scouts to camp in the area where they have in the past. All right. Thank you very much. I think that's the end of this public hearing. Thank you, Thad, for all the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thad.
And, um, and we will work to find a solution. Good. So next item on the agenda is an approval not required, and this is in regard to 1533 Main Street. And do I have someone presenting for this matter?
Yes, um, Deanne Ogiloh with Downkeep Engineering.
Great.
Also, the audience is Matt Dupuy, uh, of Ardito Law Group, uh, who we prepared the plan for.
Thank you.
This is, sure. Uh, do you want me to do a, a quick, uh, it's a very short matter, I could just say a couple of sentences?
Yeah, no, please go ahead. Present as you like.
Sure. So, um, pretty straightforward. These are, um, perhaps for the members of the public, these are the approval not required is a clause in the subdivision control law that allows the planning board, uh, to divide properties that have adequate, safe and adequate access to vital access standard, uh, for parcels of lots of land, uh, without going through a formal procedure, um, that would require perhaps laying out of the road or, or special permit issued by the board. So it's the short form, Form A, they're often called. Uh, there's adequate frontage. Um, uh, your town planner, Ally, did a nice, quick summary on it. Um, the, uh, bolt-a-lots, uh, meet the frontage requirements, uh, which is the, the absolutely critical thing that you look at. Um, they, um, I think we can all agree that, uh, Route 28 there does, uh, provide safe and adequate access where on the outside of a curve with decent site distances, and there's nice wide pavement. Um, the, uh, the, the road has sufficient width grades and adequate construction, uh, for, for, for suitable access. And, and when those tests are met, uh, this, this board could comfortably endorse a plan as approval not required under the subdivision control law, which allows the two pieces, or the, the larger tract to be, uh, divided in the manner that we have, uh, shown here. So, um, it's a, a plan which I think does meet all your standards and the standards for recording at the registry, and I would present that bolt-a-lots do meet, um, the, uh, area in frontage and, uh, shape that they need to. Those are accessory things, the, the critical thing that you look at is frontage, of course, but, um, that being said, there, it's a pretty straightforward plan, and, um, myself or, uh, the attorney could answer questions if you do have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, are there any questions from the board? Questions or comments? Please go ahead or raise your hand. So this is an approval not required, it's not a subdivision. Uh, it does meet the requirements, uh, for the division of land, uh, according to the A and R. Uh, it meets the frontage requirements. If there are no questions on the, from the board, uh, we could, uh, go ahead to ask for a motion to endorse this A and R plan.
Bob Dubus, move to, move to endorse this thing.
All right. And Warren, do you second that motion?
Well, I was going to, I will second the motion, but I had one quick question first. I'd just like
Sure.
to, uh, reconfirm that this is, uh, zoned R20.
Says G3.
Yeah, that's the, that is accurate. We've got an R, the zoning district is R20 Residential District, correct? Even though it's on Route 28.
Thank you.
All right. So Warren, you second the, the motion?
I do.
All right. So let's do a roll call vote, and the vote is...
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. The, the paper we have here says zoning district GB3. Is, is that wrong?
So let's
As far as I know, it's, um...
Or that's Pates, that's the next item before?
That's the next one, yes.
Sorry.
This, this one... Yes, it says R20.
All right. My bad.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. No worries. Um, so we have a motion, and Warren has seconded the motion to endorse this approval not required plan. So let's do a roll call vote. Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, vote to endorse.
Uh, Bob Wurchafter?
I vote to endorse.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, vote to endorse.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, vote to endorse.
And this is Catherine, and I vote to endorse this approval not required plan as submitted. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda, uh, is a pre-application for a site plan approval, and this is in regards to, uh, 1260 Main Street, which is Pates Restaurant, and this is an addition of storage and shed at the rear of the property, and also the addition of fence by rear dumpster, addition of handicap ramp at the rear of the property, and revision of the front entrance and front handicap ramp. And I think we do, uh, do we have a presenter for this property? Mr. Riley?
Yeah, Bill Riley on behalf of, uh, the, uh, Pates Restaurant. So the only, it's really a very modest change in, in, uh, they're adding a, uh, building with a little storage in the rear, and they're modifying the, uh, uh, the handicap access, so that it's, it's, so that it's more efficient for, uh, people with disabilities to enter the restaurant. That's about it, so...
All right. That's all you have to, uh, comment, Mr. Riley? And this is a pre-application, um, and I will mention a couple of points that Ally points out in her, uh, staff report. This is a pre-application, but, uh, you will notice that the changes have already been made. Uh, the, the shed is in a, the storage space is already in existence, the chair, the stairs in front of the building have already been amended and so on. Uh, so it's a little bit after the fact that we're doing this, uh, we need to, but we need to go through the site plan approval process. Uh, there is an issue with the parking. Uh, right now, the striping for the parking, uh, does not meet the nine-by-18 or 10-by-20 spacing requirements, and the number of parking spaces Ally mentions on the staff report that are shown on the site are forty-nine, which include four handicap spaces, but the number required is fifty-seven, so there's two issues with the parking. One is the proper striping, and second is, we would need to consider a waiver, uh, for, because they don't meet the minimum number of parking spaces. Um, Pates has been around, you know, forever, uh, probably predates zoning in Chatham, uh, but nevertheless, when something comes up for review, we have to do our complete review. So Arthur's not here to speak for this, so I'll speak for this. But we need to have the drainage calculations for the site. We need to have information on all of our site plan review criteria and all of our requirements submitted for the formal site plan review application. So those are just a few of the comments that I'll make. And let's go through the board members. Again, this is a pre-application. We want to consider our site plan review criteria and advise the applicant about what needs to be done for their formal site plan review. So Warren, do you have comments or questions?
Well, just the question as to whether any of the proposed items in this applicant's package have yet to be effected or has everything that's been in the plan in the applicant's package already been done?
Mr. Riley, go ahead.
You know, it's funny, I, I, I'm pretty sure the handicap access in the back has been done. I'm not aware of the fact that the front one's been done. I, I do know that they have created the storage building in the back.
All right, any other questions, Warren?
Well, it mentions the steps that are in the front that need to be done and the handicap access in the front. I did not see those there on my site inspection. And, and also, staff's comments recommend that or indicate this needs historic business district approval for various insundries as well. I'm just, I'm just confused here as to why we're reviewing things that are already done? Why couldn't we focus on what still needs approval? I, I don't believe the fact that the, how, the parking doesn't measure up to our current standards is necessarily relevant, given the size of the structure of the building and a capacity hasn't changed. And there is parking available both across the 28 as well as adjoining properties, whether that's been officially permitted or not. It's never really been an issue in the past, so I don't see why it would be here. I'm just curious as to what hasn't been done that perhaps we could talk about. I, I don't want to talk about comments I might have had about a shed that's already been done. It, everything I saw there looked to be well accomplished. It's very crowded in the back. But at the same time, it's well screened off. It's well, it's efficient use of space, put it that way. But at any rate, I don't have a problem with the lack of parking. And I would really just like to know what has yet to be approved or yet to be put in place, because to me, that's what's relevant for our consideration here.
Thank you, Warren, this is Catherine. And I do see Ellie has her hands raised. And so I'd like to ask Ellie to reply to your question.
Sure, thank you, Catherine. So the applicant did install the storage shed in the back, which is a requirement to come to site plan approval. So technically, they should have come for site plan approval prior to putting in the storage shed in the back. So that's why it's coming before you now. They've also, from a site visit as well, have constructed the handicap space and the handicap ramp in the back. But I agree with you, the applicant has yet to construct the front handicap space or the front handicap ramp. But it is a requirement, you know, all of that that needed to come for site plan approval prior to it being installed on site, and that did not occur. So we're requiring the applicants to come in front of the board now to get the approval for the work that was already done. But in my staff report, I do talk about the parking spaces because it is something that we, you know, normally review under our, you know, bylaw, any time a site plan comes in. So I wanted to make sure that the board had that information. But as, you know, with other sites and other applications, the planning board does have the ability to waive the number of required parking spaces. And again, this, you know, site has been there for a very long time. But it's coming in front of you, and so I wanted to make sure you had all the information.
Well, Ellie, has the HBDC had reviewed whatever and given whatever approvals you indicate need to be given by them?
I don't believe that the applicant has gone to HBDC, but Bill might correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, we're, we're trying to, you know, it's one of these things, you know, these guys are going 90 miles an hour, and it never occurred to them that they need a site plan approval to change the handicap to access and add the little storage building. So we're sort of trying to play catch up. We hope to have the, hopefully file with the HBDC tomorrow, so they can weigh in. But, I mean, it's, I mean, the place has been there since the 50s. And, you know, I don't think we should be obligated to go through drainage and/or consider restriping the parking lot. I mean, it's, it's just been there. So, you know, I think if we focus on the, the very small changes that, you know, the, the storage shed and the handicap access, and we can get through this pretty quickly, I think.
This is Catherine, and Bob Dubis, I do see your hand is raised, but if I could just make a comment. I just want to be sure, Warren, that it's clear what's happened here essentially is that changes were made that should have gone through planning board approval for site plan amendment and should have gone through this process, but did not go through the process. So even though they've already been installed, we have to approve them. And what that means is that it needs to go through the site plan approval process with the planning board, site plan amendment, which means that everything is, is brought up, as we saw with some other matters that have been before us recently, even for buildings that have been there a long time. When there's an amendment and we have to review the site plan amendments, then all of our site plan criteria are brought into play. And all of those things do need to be reviewed. So we need to look at the parking, we need to look at the drainage calculations. We basically need to do, to do everything, to do a, a formal site plan review. So that's the situation here. I do understand also that what the situation has been is that if changes are made without the proper approvals, which was what the situation is here, the building commissioner can not issue the renewal of the certificate of occupancy. So there is some enforcement that comes into play. As I understand it, what's happened here, and Ellie will correct me if I'm wrong, is that a temporary renewal of the certificate of occupancy has been issued because the applicant is now taking steps to do this pre-application and the formal site plan review to get the approvals that they need. So therefore, the building commissioner issued a temporary certificate of occupancy. So I hope that makes sense.
Well, I mean, you know, I don't think, I don't think it makes sense because they, you know, it would be a lot easier for us to just undo the new handicapped access and do away with the storage building.
I'm just, Mr. Riley? I'm just explaining to the board what the situation is as it stands. And that's as I understand what it is right now. So I just want the board to know that. And we're just going to continue to go through the board and see if there's more questions and comments. So let's go to Bob Wurchafter.
Well, I mean, what, what, I, I, I mean, this is just, yeah, take it down and come to us and do it correctly. It's almost my, my, my feeling here. Ignorance of, of the law doesn't give you a right to just come and, and put that up. We may have wanted you to do it differently. And now we have no choice because you put it up and, and, and basically bypassed the law and expect us to, to rubber stamp it. I'm not, I'm not really too happy about being put in this situation. And I, I, I don't know, I, I, as a result, I'm not going to be lenient and say, no, you don't have to do the, the, the other things like the, the traffic and the, and the parking and the drainage. Because had you come to us before, you might have made an argument that said, look, the, the parking is really not part of this. And we might have said, yes. But now, because of the way you've come before us, we're going to have to be strict about every requirement that, that we have a right over. That's how I feel about it.
Thank you, Bob. And Bob Dubis?
Thank you, Catherine. When Bob Gardner was there, I just want to clarify. I'm not, I'm not condoning anything. I'm just saying that there was two small sheds that were out back. And they were, they were fatigued. How about, how we use that word? They were very fatigued. And so I went back there. They have been, well, one's a container now and one is a shed that was rebuilt. Rebuilt by taking the old one out and putting a new one in. So I just want to clarify that there were two sheds there originally from Bob Gardner. And they've expanded on it, which, which, like you say, should come before the board. But, but it's, it's, so it's only, to me, it's like a half a, a half a bad thing, not a whole bad thing. But yes, they should have come before us. But there were two there. And a handicap ramp, anytime you can get a handicap ramp, it's worthwhile. I don't know what jurisdiction we have over where it goes or how it goes, as long as it's correct.
Great. So Roger Griffin, any comments or questions?
No, not really, just, just a sort of a combination of what everyone has said. I mean, it's something that's like, yeah, it is what it is. It's been done, it's done. And we can be difficult to not be difficult, but this puts us in a bad light and it's, you know, where we are, you know? No, no comment.
Okay, thank you. This is Catherine, so again, I'll comment. This is a pre-application that's come before us. I think I would agree with Bob Wurchafter that we just, we need to require that all of our site plan review criteria are addressed in the formal application. And that will include the drainage issues. It will include the parking issues. The board may choose to waive the need to restripe. The board may choose to waive, actually, I don't know if we can do that. But we can choose to waive the additional parking spaces that are needed. We can choose to do that at the formal site plan review, but we will need to resolve the parking issues. So, so I would just advise the applicant to look at all of the site plan review criterias and make sure that full information is provided on all of those for the formal site plan review. And also, tonight, the board, our vote would be to accept this pre-application. And also, we need to decide whether we would wish to schedule a site visit and a public hearing. So if there's no other comments or questions from the board, we could move to vote. We could, first, I would ask for a motion to accept the pre-application. Remember, this is just a pre-application, and we've been offering our input to the applicant about what's needed for the formal application. So do I have a motion to accept this pre-application?
I believe we accept this pre-application.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Bob Dubis will second.
All right, let's do a roll call vote, Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, I approve.
Bob Wurchafter?
I approve.
Bob Dubis?
Bob Dubis approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approve.
This is Catherine, I also approve that we accept this pre-application. So let's consider, do we want to do a site visit? Do we want to schedule a site visit for the planning board? We could do a formal vote, or I could just get a sense of the board. How do you feel, Warren?
Well, I've already made a site visit. I don't think I would benefit from a second one.
All right, and Bob Wurchafter?
I don't think that's necessary.
And Roger Griffin?
No, I know the property very well, I'm fine, I don't need one.
All right, and Bob Dubis?
Bob Dubis has known that place for a long, long time.
Yes.
I don't need to go back there.
Yeah, and this is Catherine, I also know the site very well. So I think we're, we're clear that we do not need a site visit. So now let's consider, do we want to ask for a public hearing? Can I get a sense of the board? I think the board is also inclined not to require a public hearing. Bob Wurchafter?
I, no, I mean, I don't want to be vindictive, but that's one that could have been.
Okay. Warren Chain?
This is Warren, I don't think we need a public hearing. I think what, what has been done without permission actually is likely to be well received by the abutters. And so I don't think that there's going to be much in the way of public comment that would be negative. So I don't, I don't think we need a public hearing.
And Roger?
No, I don't, I don't think it warrants a public meeting. I don't think we need that at all.
Bob Dubis, did I already get your opinion?
That's, it's almost an icon. I don't think that we need a public awareness.
Yeah, I, this is Catherine, I agree. I don't think we need a public hearing. But again, I do want to reiterate to the applicant that we do need to require that all of the site plan review criteria are met and that full information is provided on everything we've requested, including the drainage calculations. And at the formal application, the board can consider the parking issues. But we do need to require full information and a full formal site plan review. So in, including the things that have already been done without approval. So thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to go on to our next agenda item, which is a release of covenant, bond or statement of conditions. And this again is for 279 Crowell Road. And this is continued from our March 14th meeting. And again, Ellie mentions in her draft reports that we have received no new information from the applicant as we've requested. And we've repeatedly said that we cannot move on this matter until we receive that information. So I will suggest to the board that we continue this matter to a future planning board meeting. And I'm going to suggest June 13th. So again, we give the applicant enough time to provide the information that we've already requested. Bob Dubis has mentioned that he needs to...
Madam Chairman, I did have to recuse myself for this.
Yes.
But let me, let me interject one thing.
Yes.
He is waiting on me to pave the front entrance. And that's the reason why, that's the only thing I believe that's left, is to pave it. And the plants have just opened, and he's on my agenda for Friday to pave it. I'm sorry I couldn't get there earlier to do the job, so he could probably feel free to come to you. But, so by Friday or next Monday, the paving of that entrance in the drive will be finished. So I apologize on his behalf for not having the job done, but the plants have just opened up.
All right, Ellie has her hand raised?
I do, I do believe to take the onus off of you, Bob, that we are, also are waiting for a site plan from the applicant to show that new drainage area. And as I think all, all of the board members know, the surveyors have been extremely backed up. There's just so much work out there right now. So it's just taking a little bit of extra time.
Okay, so I, I think we're just wanting to, for safety's sake, give a little more time to the applicant to get everything we need. So that's why we're suggesting, or I'm suggesting, that we continue the matter to the June 13th meeting. Do I have a motion to that effect?
This is Warren Chain, so moved.
Thank you, can I have a second to that motion?
Yeah, Roger Griffin, I'll second that motion.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wurchafter?
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approve.
And this is Catherine. And this is Catherine Helfer, and I also approve that we continue this matter to the June 13th meeting. And let's hope that we can get all the information in that we need, uh, by that time. Thank you very much. So now we have a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And this is regarding, uh, a driveway in the Conservancy District for 37 Clamshell Drive. Do I have a presenter for this matter?
Yes, uh, Donnie Dunham here, uh, from DeMartin Dunham Builders.
All right.
The All Real Estate Trust.
Please go ahead.
I can just give you a little brief background.
Sure.
The house, 37 Clamshell Drive, we're proposing to raise and rebuild. And the existing driveway, you can see to the, I think that's itself, um, is to be reconfigured slightly due to the turning radius into the driveway. You can't really fit two cars and keep them off of Clamshell Drive. Clamshell Drive is a pretty narrow private way for those who've been down there. The reconfiguration will all, will be done in P Stone, um, for good drainage. And the proposed driveway will also be done in, in a crushed stone. I know that in the recommendations, it was mentioned the permeable materials. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to help.
Yes, thank you. This is Catherine. I have a question. I just want to be sure I'm looking at the plans correctly. So there's the existing drive, which is to the south and slightly to the east. And that's gonna just be reconfigured slightly, and it will be of permeable material. Right now, it's paved. But that would be changed. So, and then you're going to add another driveway, which is a little bit to the north and to the west. And that, but you're adding a second driveway, and that will be also of permeable material, correct?
Correct. And that driveway, the purpose of that driveway is to access a garage that will be underneath the house. So...
A garage underneath the house. Okay.
Correct. And, and if you notice, uh, the existing dwelling was much closer to the road, which prevented the depth of the driveway, allowing for a car to be in front of the house in the proposed driveway. So we've twisted the, for lack of a better term, we've turned the new home to be parallel with the septic system to allow for a car depth from the new home to Clamshell Drive without the car being on the road. And then just one other point to that, there's an overhead, uh, wire, if you notice, there in the middle of the site, and that was sort of another, um, safety factor in twisting the home to get these raised decks away from the overhead wire. So to, to kind of answer your question full circle, the proposed drive had a few different purposes.
So this is Catherine. So could you?
Yep.
I don't know if you're screen sharing or if it's Ally, but so the thick black line is the existing dwelling. And could you outline where the proposed dwelling is going to be?
Catherine, the thick black line is the new dwelling.
That's the new dwell? Okay, that explains a lot. All right, because then it's labeled incorrectly because it says existing. Oh, the existing must go with that dashed line.
Correct.
That sort of dashed line. Okay.
Angle line is the existing. Correct.
Okay. All right, I see. I see. And then the proposed, the second driveway will go underneath the house. And the existing dwelling, so does that have a basement now?
No, it does not. This is in an AE zone, so the first floor will be, elevation will be at 14.3. To put that in perspective, the garage slab is around six roughly. So from grade, you know, there'll be about an eight-foot, uh, space under the house that will be unfinished, given its, you know, female location.
All right. I, I'm just asking these questions to understand the driveways.
Sure.
Uh, as you know, just a reminder to the board, our recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals is just concerning the driveways, but I did just want to understand how that worked in terms of the house, changes to the house. So let me just ask if there are other questions or comments from planning board members? Yes, I see Warren's raising his hand.
Uh, yes, this is Warren Chain. Um, I was out at the site, and I think, um, what's being proposed here, uh, looks like it fits with the, the neighborhood and, uh, the facts of life with respect to rising waters quite nicely. But a couple of questions. The proposed driveway, which is up, uh, on the north side of the house that would go into the garage, um, that's certainly on the upslope at the moment. Would you, um, would that need, are you intending that that is going to be graded?
Yeah, so...
Lower?
Yeah, so it will be graded from that point of, so the foundation of, the construction of the new home will have a four-foot, uh, foundation, and then it'll be framed, you know, conventionally above that to the first floor. So that'll be graded from the northern part of that driveway. I guess if you're looking at the house, um, on the right side of the driveway, it'll slope up similar to like it does now, if that makes sense. I hope that...
Similar to the way it does now.
Yeah.
Because now it goes up basically to, uh, the foundation of the existing house.
Right. So I guess what I'm saying is, if you're on the right side of the proposed driveway, it will be graded down to the street level. The driveway will be at street level, pitched, um, at six, the grade is around six. And then to the right of the driveway, you, it'll be sloping lawn from right, from left to right.
Okay, so there's, you know, a good bit of grading going on here.
Correct.
Um, second question is the existing parking area for the existing house. As opposed to the driveway for the abutter. It indicates on the map, it's so small, I can't read it at the moment, but it, um, it's just going to be what? Reclaimed and turned into gar, uh, yard or something?
Which, you mean where, you mean to this, you mean where it says reconfigured?
No, the reconfigured part is the, uh, as I understood it, is the driveway for the, it's really for the abutter. But in the front, uh, left of the house...
No, no, it's, no.
No, it's not.
The reconfigured part is just to have, to be able to have an, another car parked at the house. So that isn't for the abutter. The abutter's driveway is further south, which happens...
I, I'm now, uh, zooming in so I can see the plan without unfolding it in front of me. Yeah, the existing paved drive to be reconfigured. My question is, what does reconfigured mean? That's all.
So, so I think initially in my, I guess my brief description, if you look at the site plan that Dave Clark has here in his overlay, where you, where the cursor is, there are some timbers that are at an angle. So the problem right now is that you really can't fit a car that well, given the angle of that turn. So those timbers are to be removed, and in that asphalt area, we are proposing to do a permeable stone material to match the proposed driveway. So it's more just the shape of it, less, it's not really, we're adding any square footage or, you know, the net result is zero. Exactly. Yep.
Right. The depth of that area is not going to change then. It did seem to me that, uh, you have, you, if you have a, a large car, you can't, uh, pull it straight in to that area and get it off the road.
I agreed. That's also why the proposed drive is there. So if, you know, our client has a car parked in her dri, in the garage, we can still comfortably fit an additional car behind it with a depth of, you know, 20 feet, et cetera. So I agree, it's a little bit tight. However, you know, if you have a small car, it can fit. The reconfiguration might help a little bit. The challenge here is the abutter's driveway, the furthest to the south, is primarily in 37 Clamshells Lot, if you notice. So if you scroll, I don't know who's controlling this, but if you scroll down, the, we taught, we considered, just so the board kind of understands that we really did look at all options, we considered putting the driveway to the left of the septic system, um, at the corner there, because it's a great area for a driveway. But then we would be eliminating the neighbor's driveway. So a little bit of a challenge with that, you know, because then they kind of don't have anywhere to park, if that makes sense.
Will there be any regrading required for this existing paving or parking area?
Uh, no, nope.
You're only talking about moving the, I'll call it the retention wall made out of timber?
Exactly.
Okay, I don't have any other questions, except to ask the board, you know, how we feel about major regrading of the, uh, for the proposed driveway in the Conservancy District and flood zone, but...
Yes. Thank you, Warren. Yes, there's the regrading issue. This is Catherine. There's also the issue that basically what's happening here is there's going to be two driveways. And our bylaw specifically states that what we can consider, uh, we can consider the construction of a driveway in the Conservancy District where there is no other adequate access. So we have to consider whether two driveways is something, uh, that meets the requirements of our bylaw. Bob Worchafter, comments, questions?
Yeah, I'm, I was just about to say the very same things you said. I do, uh, applaud the raising of the building. I do applaud the turning of the, uh, previous, uh, asphalt into permeable surfaces. But I, I am, I'm concerned about the grading, and I'm concerned about the second driveway. I would love to find a solution where you could put in a driveway where you want it there, uh, without grading and perhaps eliminate the other, other one and make that just a permeable surface that you would, I guess you could park your car on it when you, you needed to. But, I mean, that's essentially what you're doing, I hope, is just turning that, that old driveway into, clamshells and other things like that, that if somebody comes, they can put their car on, and the other one is now your driveway.
That's correct. That's correct.
So tell, I mean, technically, grading is, is an issue too. But I, you certainly can't put any fill in, but you're taking some away?
So we have to, I, I don't know if you were able to go to the site, but the existing foundation will be removed, which is a block crawl space, removed and excavated to support this new foundation, which will then get us out of flood to 14.3. So as a result of that, part of the access to the house, it's kind of hard without having elevations. The access at street level to the house, to go up the stairs in the front, where you kind of see those steppers, is the only access that the client will have from street level. So as a result of having the driveway or not, there will also be some grading, not necessarily removing of fill, but grading of fill, um, to get that, you know, to, to, to get that access, if you will. I, I, it's not, not a drastic grading, um, but it, it definitely will be affected, you know, to be able to, to excavate and, you know, get the new foundation to where the elevations need to be. And then to your original point, the reconfigured driveway is more of a guest parking. As of right now, uh, you know, the, the only option if a guest arrives, or even just an additional car, to one of the other board members' original point is, you know, if the car is larger than a small sedan, there's really nowhere to park, and they're parking on the road or on the grass that, you know, is near that walkway that's really not even on their property. So the proposed driveway is really ultimately the main drive that, you know, will allow to have two cars, one under the house and one, you know, in the driveway while staying off the street. Yeah, I, I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, um, Bob Dupus, do you have comments or questions?
No, I know the property. The only question I have is, I see there's, they're gonna put a deck over the, the, uh, septic tank and, uh, D-Box. I just hope that the deck's high enough so somebody can get under there and remove the covers. It's the only concern I had.
It's a good question, Bob. Um, it'll be roughly eight feet off of the top of the septic.
Well, then I go, I guess you don't have a problem when you call me.
Yeah. Exactly.
Okay. Um, and Roger Griffin, comments or questions? Roger, are you there? Maybe you're muted? I seem to have lost Roger. All right. Um, so this is Catherine. I just want to check, you've said there will be grading involved. We're, we're wanting to look at the original driveway, no longer as a driveway, but just as a parking area, off-street parking. Uh, because otherwise, we have to say there's two driveways, which is specifically would be prohibited by the bylaw. But the proposed driveway does involve grading. Are you adding fill?
No, no.
No? All right. So just grading, but no addition of fill?
No. The only addition would be, you know, any stone, permeable material that's used. No fill.
All right. Um, so we're looking at making, again, making a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals about in, about the proposed construction of a driveway in the Conservancy District. Our bylaw requires that it's made of permeable material, that it allows for the unobstructed flow of water. Bylaw also requires that there's no other adequate means of access. If there's no other comments from the board, I think we could go to vote. My only issue is this, do we consider this two driveways, or do we consider it a parking area plus a driveway?
Madam Chairman, Bob Dupus. Under the circumstances, the, the parking area, and I'll use it as that, I know the place. The parking area is very small. They can't expand the parking area because of the septic system.
Okay.
So I understand the need, uh, because there's so many people that live in that area, parking is at a premium, that to have the driveway in the new location and go, going underneath the building to add some protection for the weather, uh, and, and to allow two cars to park there, then, like you said, if they, they designated that a overflow parking area, and, uh, even if they, they Sheldon grassed it over so that it, it would look, uh, over time, it would look, it would look like part of a lawn, but be able to be parked on. Uh, that's the way I would look at it.
All right. And I'm just gonna have to ask the applicant, is there any, the board is concerned about the grading that's involved, um, in the new proposed drive. Is there any way that that can be avoided?
Well, I guess kind of tacking on to Bob's point here, so initially, we, we considered, um, putting the drive on the left side of the house. However, the depth of the drive to the property line became more of an issue, which would have affected grading less. I think it's, the big thing here for designing this in a struggle that, that we had, we definitely explored all options, and I hope the board kind of understands that, and I hope that I was able to get that point, point across. But the... hope that I was able to get that point, point across. But the, the, the issue here is that the septic system is a Title V system that's existing. If the client was forced into upgrading the septic system, it would have allowed for varying flexibility around reconfiguration of that existing drive if the septic system was redesigned or changed. However, this system passes Title V. So the house was almost forced to be generally in the location that it is now. You know, twisting it obviously helps get it off the road. And then more importantly, we're taking and removing a patio that is closer to the conservancy and over the lot line in the rear. I don't, I don't know if that was noticed as well, but there is a section of the property that, that has retaining walls and a patio that actually is outside of the property. So to answer your question, I think we're doing the best possible that we can as far as limiting any regrading. I think that any regrading that happens will, will be affected whether we do the driveway or not in order to get this foundation to where it needs to be with the elevations. So I, I don't know that the driveway necessarily, the proposed drive is going to make a drastic difference on the grading aspect or not. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that, that helps. I, I just want to make sure that I cover all. It was sort of a domino effect of the decision of, design of this, of this driveway. And to Bob's point, you know, parking in this area is, is nearly impossible if you have more than one car.
Okay, all right. Great. So the grading is not triggered so much by the new proposed drive as it is by the.
Impact.
The house and the, and the foundation and impact. Okay.
Exactly.
All right. So.
Catherine, can I, can I propose that?
Yes.
We approve this design of removing the old driveway, approving the new driveway, and converting the old driveway into a gra, not grass, but a, a flat area of, of unspecified use that is not a driveway?
Yes. You, you can propose that we vote to recommend that to the zoning board of appeals. Because we do want to, I would agree that we want to avoid approving two driveways.
Yeah, I specifically wanted to say removal of the old driveway. What they make the new driveway into is, is fine, you know, as a, as a flat area of permeable surface.
Yes. That allows for the unobstructed flow of water. We always add that phrase. So, so you're making a motion that we include that wording and that that is what we recommend to the zoning board of appeals? All right. So may I have a second to that motion?
Roger Griffin, I'll second that motion.
All right. So let's do a roll call vote. Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, I approve.
Bob Wurchafter?
Bob Wurchafter, I approve.
Bob Duppus?
Bob Duppus, I approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, I approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I approve. This is a very specific positive recommendation. I'm just advising the applicant, we're approving the new proposed driveway to be made of, and giving a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals for the new proposed driveway using permeable, permeable material and allowing for the unobstructed flow of water. But we are also saying that the existing driveway should be removed and a flat area of unspecified use can be created there. Again, with permeable material or grass.
Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Great. So the next item on our agenda is really just to let everyone know regarding the endorsement of the plans for the subdivision that we approved at seventy nine Forest Beach Road, that the appeals period has ended for that and no one has filed an appeal, so that we need to sign those plans. And Ally will send out an email to ask us to come and sign those plans. We just want to announce it publicly that the appeal period has ended for that subdivision that we approved at seventy nine Forest Beach Road. All right. So next on the agenda is chairman's comments. I have a couple of comments to make. I did want to let everyone know that just this morning I received a memo from Shanna, who is the executive secretary to the select board. And I actually just want to read to you this memo. So just so that you're informed, we will get more information on it. And then subsequently, and we will be able to be in a better position to process this once we get further information. But this came today, and this is regarding the protective zoning bylaw regarding the runway protection zone overlay district. And this is a remand to the planning board from the select board. At its meeting on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, the select board received a presentation on the draft warrant article proposing a runway protection zone or R P Z overlay district. The planning board's vote of one, three, two from its March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two public hearing on the article to recommend the article to twenty twenty-two annual town meeting was relayed to the select board at that time. The select board, in acknowledgement of the importance of having an, an R P Z overlay district in place to comply with legal and contractual requirements, voted unanimously to send the proposed bylaw back to the planning board for further consideration. The select board asked that the planning board take up the matter again and work diligently in conjunction with the airport commission to craft a protective zoning bylaw that realizes broad support and which may be favorably recommended to town meeting voters in the future. Should you have any questions, please contact Shanna or obviously the select board. So I just wanted to let you know that we received that memo. We will be receiving also the minutes of the select board's discussion on this article and other information. But we will need to continue to process that matter through the planning board. The second item that I just wanted to mention, and I think everyone is aware, that our principal planner, Ally Sabatino, has accepted another position with the state of Massachusetts. And this is her last week with us as the principal planner for the town of Chatham. And I know, I just want to say, Ally's been with us for a number of years. I just want to say what a pleasure it has been for me to work with Ally and what a marvelous, stupendous job she's done for us as our principal planner. I just want to express my appreciation. I think I speak for the whole board when I say how much we've appreciated working with you, appreciated your diligence and your carefulness and your support in everything that we've done. I think the whole community should be thankful to you. And also, it's sad to see you go, but I know that the reason for your going is to spend more time with your family. It's a, a little bit of a long commute from where you live to the town of Chatham. And your new job with the state of Massachusetts will allow less of a commute. And so, of course, we just want to support you in your family life and a happy family life. And we will miss you. But of course, we wish you just great success in your future job and in your home life as well. And again, just a deep appreciation for all that you've done for the town of Chatham. I feel, having worked with you personally for a number of years, that it comes from your sincere desire to create better communities that offer better life for people. And wish you great success in continuing in those efforts. So thank you, Ally.
Thank you, Catherine. And thank you to the entire board.
Thank you, Ally.
Thank you. I know, I, I appreciate that so much. And, you know, I wrote it in my, my email to you guys, but you really do make my job fun and easy and I'm so thankful for you. So thank you for all the years and, you know, making this a fun job. So, and I'll miss you all.
Catherine, can I propose that we sign the thing that we have to sign at a local establishment? So that we can give her a proper goodbye? Seeing as she's not an employee anymore, we're not going to be violating any kinds of.
Yeah.
Ethics laws?
Yeah. Maybe we'd have to sign at the, at the community development department, but we could somehow, we have to observe, we still have to observe open meeting law. So that's always the issue of gathering. But maybe we can think of something that we can do to celebrate Ally before she has to go. So let, let's think of something that we can do properly.
And are you leaving, Ally, Friday?
Friday.
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 Yeah. But again, I think I speak for everyone. We, we so much appreciate the service that you've given this town. So.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. So if there's no other comments from the board, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. This will be the last time you get to hear it, Al.
I know.
And could I have a second to that motion?
I second that.
All right. So Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wurchafter?
I approve.
Bob Duppus?
Bob Duppus approves.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approves.
And this is Catherine. I also approve that we adjourn the meeting. Let's note the time as seven eighteen in the evening. Thank you, everybody, for participating. Thank you, Ally. We will miss you. Thanks again.